Chris, your gift to them is in my office.
My gift to you.
Your gift to tack and bar, to my office. So you give it to me.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think we're about ready to get started. And before we begin, I wanted to let you know the chair of our study group, Chris Faulkner, could not be with us tonight. He is with his mother. And I would ask that you keep Chris and his father in your prayers as they are dealing with certainly some difficult times. And please keep he and his family in your prayers. I'd like to welcome you all today, and I'd like to thank you all for your presence and for taking time out of your evening to be here with us tonight. This has been a long and thorough journey, a long and thorough process, if you will, for us, beginning with the establishment of the study group in March. And since that time, the study group has been diligent in its work. And since March, we have held two town hall meetings. And we've also held five small meeting groups to address your questions about the United Methodist Church and about disaffiliation. Tonight, we present the third town hall meeting, and we are glad to have our district superintendent with us this evening. But before we begin, I'd like to ask Steve if he would open us in prayer.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the privilege of gathering together today in fellowship and in your presence. Lord, we ask that your Holy Spirit fall upon this place anoint our speaker Doug tonight to speak your word. And, Lord, may all that we do be acceptable to you and draw us, not only as individuals, but collectively, deeper into communion with you tonight. We do want to lift up Marie Faulkner, Lord. We know she's coming to the end of her long journey. And we ask you to welcome her into your eternal presence. And just wrap your loving arms around her, Lord, and help her to experience your peace. And be with Jimmy and with Chris and the whole family, Lord, as they're part of this process, this walk that we, each of us, will walk someday. And so, Lord, we just ask that you be with them and comfort them. You're the God of all comfort. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
So let's begin. And Reverend Gilreith, we are so grateful for your presence this evening and for being here tonight and for being here to answer our questions. Thank you so much. And this is how the evening will flow tonight. Questions have been gathered by the study group, from members of our study group. We've also solicited the help of our members to ask questions as well. Those have been submitted. And our combined questions were sent to Reverend Gilreith for his information and for his review. As has been the case with our previous town hall meetings, at the conclusion of the meeting this evening, we will not be taking questions from the audience. Reverend Gilreith, we look forward to your remarks and your response to the submitted questions. And I'd like to now bring Steve back up for an introduction of our district superintendent.
Well, we certainly are honored that our district superintendent is here with us tonight. It's been a while since we've had a district superintendent come and visit us here, and it is a great honor. I said I wasn't going to say that, and I said it anyway, so please forgive me. This is going to the conference, I'm probably destined to be at the widest. Anyway, it's certainly delightful. We're thankful. I want to recognize Lynn, Gilreith, Doug's wife, who's here. So we're certainly glad that you're here as well. Doug gave me very simple way to introduce him, but I will throw in something that, because when he introduced me in front of the district, he said I was his favorite Tennessee fan. Maybe his only Tennessee fan he liked. So I'm going to say, he is my favorite Alabama fan. And so, on that note, now, all right, Blake, I'm sorry. You got a compadre over there in Blake. But it is wonderful that he's here to share with us tonight. Thank you.
Lord be with you. Gosh, it's great to be with you, to be with Steve. I am appreciative of the great work that is done here at Delanega, United Methodist Church. I'm appreciative to Steve for his friendship. I will say this about Steve, he is my favorite Tennessee fan. And appreciative of that, one play made a difference in that game, and we know what the difference was. That was not pass interference in the end zone. If it had not been called, if it had not been called, Alabama would have run the clock out, they would have won the game. All right? So let's just say it. And Alabama is two plays away from being in the playoffs for the national championship. For the Georgia fans out there, I said it last year, I will say it again this year, if Alabama cannot win the national championship, I will pull for Georgia to do so. So we can be in agreement on that? Yes. So, yeah. And, you know, as far as Georgia's concerned, two of my, well, one of my children have already graduated from UGA, and I have a junior this year at UGA. And I have a, I'm not sure what to call him, he's been at North Georgia College now, and in his fifth year. Not sure if he's a senior, a junior, a sophomore, he might even be a freshman. We're not real sure. But, yeah. So it is great to be with you here tonight. I do have a few ties to Delanega. I understand that Richard Chuni attends here. Is Richard here tonight? Richard, very good to see you. Richard and I went to seminary together. And I've embarrassed myself on several occasions with Richard. When Richard retired, I thought that it was considerably early. I remember running into him at an event and just told him I could not believe that he had retired, because I'd always made the assumption that Richard and I were the same age. Now, I'm not going to say one way or the other, who is older, but Richard did correct me when I said that. So I've appreciated his friendship and his leadership in the North Georgia Annual Conference and have respected him and been friends with him. Gosh, Richard, how many years has it been? Thirty-four years we've known one another. Thirty-five, okay. I was trying to think of that on the way up here. So thirty-five years we've known one another. So we've been at this for a while, brother. We've been at it for a while. And neither you nor I have experienced our churches, we're experiencing it now. And the concerns that you have for our denomination, I share many of those concerns as well, too. It is not the same church that it was when I first began serving in the North Georgia Annual Conference. It is not the same church that it was ten years ago. It is not the same church it was five years ago. I feel that, I claim that, and I understand that. And, you know, my hopes and my prayers continue for the United Methodist Church as we press forward, either separately or as we press forward together, that we can make the church that will be able to reach the next generation with the gospel of Jesus Christ, the saving gospel of Jesus Christ. You know, there's a lot of things that I could do here tonight, as was shared with you. There is, or there are questions. There are eleven questions that have been presented. How much time have we got? Because those eleven questions compared to the four questions that I had at a church this past Tuesday night, four questions, and we were there for an hour and twenty minutes. You have eleven questions. You do the math. So we can be here for an hour, we can be here for two hours, two hours I would hope not, but if we get to that point, I don't know how many of you have had supper tonight, but I have not had supper tonight. And I tend about this time of night, starting to get hungry, and you know what happens when you get hungry? You get hangry. And we certainly don't want that to happen for me, and we don't want that to happen to you. My wife is with us tonight. She is with us tonight because I promised her when we got finished that we would go over to the square in Delanega and enjoy the lights and go out to eat. Is that the only reason she's with us tonight, that I promised to take her out to eat? Well, we'll see about that. A little bit about myself, a little bit about myself and my service in the North Georgia Annual Conference. Upon graduating from the Chandler School of Theology, I was appointed to a small church in Fayetteville called Friendship, United Methodist Church. I learned something very quickly at that church, that any church with the name Friendship, Joy, Hope, Faith is anything but. It was the meanest church God ever called into existence. When I was appointed there by the district superintendent, I will never forget him calling me and telling me how happy he was that I was going to Friendship. He knew nothing about me. And I said, "Well, can you tell me a little bit about the church?" Because I haven't had an opportunity to talk to the pastor yet. And he said, "Oh, it's simple." He said, "There are two groups in that church, and if one group likes the minister, the other group automatically hates the minister. And we are sending you there to bring those two groups together." And I asked the question, "Well, what happens if I'm not able to do that?" He said, "Oh, they will kill you." And they almost did. They almost did. I learned a valuable lesson about being an itinerant minister, and I pray that this does not offend you saying this, it is a saying that I've heard among many United Methodist ministers, "They can send you to hell, but you only have to stay for one year." I made the mistake of staying for two. From there, I actually was appointed to a church not far from here. I was appointed to what was then the Mountain Valley Circuit, in Mount Pleasant, United Methodist Church, where a member of this church serves now, Paul. It was Mount Pleasant, Lousville, and Chattahoochee. I preached at nine fifteen, ten thirty, and eleven thirty every Sunday. And Lynn went with me. By the time we got to the third church, she could have preached the sermon if she wanted to, and it would have been much better than what I did. But it was a good preaching experience for me. We stayed with the circuit for two years, and then the Lousville Church made the decision to go full-time, and I stayed with the Lousville Church. I served in the Cleveland community for eight years. And it was eight of the most wonderful years of my ministry. Spent a lot of time here in Delanega while we were serving there and felt a connection here. From Lousville, I was appointed to Locust Grove, in Locust Grove, Georgia. And I'll never forget when Parks Davis called me and told me that Bishop Davis had appointed me to Locust Grove. I said, "Parks, that is wonderful. Where is Locust Grove?" Had no clue. He told me, he said, "Think of Macon and back this way about forty-five minutes," and that's about right. So we served at Locust Grove for seven years and would probably still be at Locust Grove today. We had a great ministry there. My kids were very happy. Lynn was teaching there in the community, and we just had a wonderful ministry there. But as our daughter Hannah was approaching high school, she was finishing the eighth grade, I went to Mike Cash, who was my district superintendent at the time, and I said, "Mike, what guarantee can you give me that you will leave me here for the next four years? Because Lynn and I want Hannah to be able to begin the ninth grade and end in the same high school." And he chuckled at me, and he said, "There's no possibility of that whatsoever." And I said, "Well, then we need to move." And so we moved. A little side note, Hannah, our oldest daughter, had a boyfriend. I don't say dating, because she was not allowed to date at the time, but she had a boyfriend. And she did not talk to me for the first three months in our next appointment. Now, another side story to that, that same boyfriend she's now married to. So they worked it out, and they have forgiven me, and they do talk to me now. And a lot of conversations around grandchildren, but that hasn't happened yet. So from Locust Grove, I was appointed to Covington, First United Methodist Church, if you've ever been to Covington, and I served there for thirteen years. I did something most United Methodist ministers are not able to do. All three of our children started and finished the same high school. So they were, we were blessed that that took place. And would still be in Covington today. There are some days where I wish I were still in Covington. We served there for thirteen years, and the bishop called me and invited me to serve on her cabinet. My first response to her was, "Bishop, are you sure?" I went home, and I shared with Lynn the news, and after I explained to her what the bishop had explained to me, Lynn looked at me and said, "Are you sure?" It's been a wild ride, folks. Six months now, going on six months, and it's been the longest six months of my life. Going to churches and meeting with congregations while there is great joy in that, going and talking to churches about disaffiliation, I have to say, does not bring me a great deal of joy. I love the church, and I love the United Methodist Church. One of my favorite prayers is the prayer of Thomas Merton. And in that prayer, there's a line, that he prays this prayer, wrote this prayer, shared this prayer with the world, that he hopes and prays that in everything that he does, that he is seeking to bring pleasure to God. That is my prayer. And that all that I do, and all that I say, and all that I believe, that I am bringing pleasure to God. I don't always fulfill that, and I am convicted the times when I do not do that. But I believe that as we gather in this sacred and holy place tonight, that collectively, you and I have the same desire, and that is to bring pleasure to God, to bring glory and honor to the one that we serve. And while we may be different in some areas, I think that one of the things that you will learn here tonight is that there's really not a whole lot of differences between us. You love your church. I love my church. You seek to serve God. I seek to serve God. You seek to follow Jesus, and I seek to follow Jesus as well, too. I shared with Steve yesterday during a brief conversation that as I have visited many churches and have led them in informational meetings, that some of them we've had to bring to a close because they've become very contentious. And I do not mind sharing with you one of those experiences. I went to a small church out in the country, one of our African-American churches, and it was a very contentious meeting. It was a very contentious meeting because the former pastor of that church, who has since retired, had shared with portions of the congregation to come to the meeting and demand that we take a vote that day. And while we're not able to do that, those who showed up on a Saturday morning at nine o'clock prepared to take a vote were not allowed to take a vote. To make a very long story short, as people were leaving, the oldest woman in the church walked over to her current pastor and punched him in the face. The police had to be called, and the police had to separate people. Thankfully, no charges were brought against anybody, but that pastor now has an armed officer that has to accompany him to church each and every Sunday until they figure this process out. And so things that are happening across our conference are very disturbing. And while it certainly calls me a great heartache, it also reminds me of how passionate people are, and how passionate people are about their church, and how passionate people are about their beliefs, and how passionate people are about their faith. But passion, as you know, and passion as I know, can sometimes go in the wrong direction. And so we have to focus ourselves on what we're being passionate about. Are we being passionate about our faith? Are we being passionate about following Jesus? Are we being passionate about the scriptures? Are we being passionate about prayer? Here's one that I hope that all of us collectively are passionate about. Are we passionate about making disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world? That has been my passion. That has been my passion now going on thirty-two years as I've served faithfully in this annual conference. That has been the passion of your pastor Steve. That is the passion of Robin. That is the passion of Richard. And it's the passion of every pastor, or it should be the passion of every pastor, to truly make disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. We hear a lot of conversation about how the church is bending to the culture around us. And while there are areas in which I do think that the church has bent itself towards the culture of the day, I've had this conversation with many pastors, and I think Richard and Steve would agree with me. You know, when I first entered the ministry, if a couple came to me and asked me to perform their wedding ceremony, and they were living together, that was scandalous, absolutely scandalous. But over the past ten years, in all the weddings that I have performed, I can't remember the last time I married a couple that wasn't living together. And so throughout the church, we see areas in which, you know, there's things that you and I would not agree with. I certainly don't agree with a couple living together before they're married. And I hear, you know, so often that the United Methodist Church is bending its stance on sexuality, and we'll get to that tonight. But from my perspective, the United Methodist Church has a solid ethic on sexuality. And that is celibacy and singleness, and that is fidelity in marriage. That hasn't changed, folks. That has not changed. And I do not foresee the church ever making a decision on that to lift that ethic of human sexuality. Celibacy and singleness and fidelity in marriage. But as pastors, that's not something we see very often. And I don't know about you, but that point disturbs me. One of the things you're going to learn about me very quickly is I love rabbit holes, and I'll run down them real quick. That's why I ask committees and churches to present to me questions. What do you say we get to the questions and I stop rambling? How's that sound? Good to you? You also got to keep in mind something, as a district superintendent, I don't get to preach much. There's always a sermon waiting to come out, all right? So y'all call me on that if we get to that. So I'm going to jump around a little bit, and I'm going to be very honest with you. I think my peers and my colleagues would say this about me, I'm very transparent, I'm very honest, and I'm very open. I am a new district superintendent. What you deserve tonight is a very seasoned district superintendent. Unfortunately, as I've reached out to the more seasoned district superintendents to come with me, they're all busy. So you got me. For better, for worse, you got me. So I will do my very best to work through these. One of the things that I shared with Steve and shared with others, that if there is a question that is just burning your heart and burning your mind, and I do not address that question tonight, then please send that question to Steve, and then Steve will send that question to me. And then I will answer that question the best that I can, and I will actually reach out to other cabinet members and have them help me address those questions. And then I will return that to Steve, and he will pass it on to you. He'll make it available to the church as a whole. Okay? Can we agree on that? Because a lot of the questions in here dealt with jurisdictional conference and general conference questions. Unfortunately, I am not a delegate to jurisdictional conference, and I am not a delegate to general conference. And because of that, I don't completely understand the full nuance of jurisdictional conference, and I do not understand the full nuance of general conference. And I do not share that of seeking votes to go to either one. Okay? So hear that tonight. I am not seeking votes to be able to do that. So let's jump around a little bit. What are the vision and priorities of the United Methodist Church moving forward? I think that is a wonderful question and a good place for us to begin. The priorities of the United Methodist Church, I believe, moving forward, is what it has always been. The priority of the United Methodist Church is, as I stated earlier, is to make disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. And how churches live out that vision, how they determine their mission and what their mission field is, churches will move forward as they seek to do that. Unfortunately, in a lot of our smaller churches, as I- as I have visited in those churches, as I have learned those churches' stories, they struggle doing that. They struggle reaching out into their community. They struggle in evangelism. They struggle in developing what I would consider to be a path to discipleship. How exactly do we make disciples? And I can assure you that as I grow into this position, that one of the things that will be a priority for me as a district superintendent, you know, take disaffiliation off the table, even if we were not dealing with disaffiliation, that I see my role as a district superintendent to be able to empower churches and equip churches to fulfill the vision of the United Methodist Church and to fulfill their specific mission as a United Methodist Church, is to make disciples. And so, even with disaffiliation, even if we have churches that vote to leave the denomination, to either be independent, to unite with another denomination, or to become part of the Global Methodist Church, I think that we all would share the same vision and the same priority. And that is simply to make disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. That doesn't matter if you're United Methodist, Southern Baptist, Pentecostal, Global Methodist Church, Wesleyan Church, Nazarene, it does not matter. That is who we are called to be as God's people, is to share the goodness of Jesus Christ and to walk with people as they are formed and shaped as disciples. So, moving forward from here, whatever that looks like down the road, that is exactly what we will be doing. What is the United Methodist position on the role and authority of Scripture? Gosh, that's been a question that I've been asked in each and every church. And I will answer that question as a pastor. In my many years of service, I've always emphasized the authority of Scripture and the importance of Scripture in the life of the church. And I think moving forward, I pray, the United Methodist Church will not change that standard, that as United Methodists, we believe in the authority of Scripture. We take seriously the Old Testament and the New Testament, and we hold them in tension with one another, and we hold them before us. John Wesley taught us that the Bible contains all we need to know for our salvation. And I love that great story when he was asked one time, "Of all the books in the world, if you could only have one book, what book would that be?" And John Wesley said, "I am a man of one book." And I too consider myself to be a man of one book. I read the Bible daily, each and every day, and it has been a part of my ministry. It is what I turn to to preach from. It is what I have taught from, and it is what has inspired me for many, many years. You know, I'm one of those... I'm one of those ministers that I don't have a long pedigree. I don't. I do not have a long pedigree. I was not born into the church. I was not born into the church. I did not become a Christian until I was 21 years old. I had nothing to do with the church. For whatever reason, my parents made the decision not to raise us in the church. And so, I really did not have any church experience whatsoever. Long, long, long story, and I'm not gonna bore you with that tonight. But I can remember being invited into a young adult study group. And it wasn't in a United Methodist church, it was in a Southern Baptist church. And they invited me into this group, and I went out of curiosity. And that very first night, as I was hearing the Scriptures being read and discussed and prayed over, I was captured. I was captured by it. And I can remember the very next day of getting out of class in college and immediately going to a bookstore. And at 21 years old, I bought my very first Bible. I bought my very first Bible, and I began to devour that book. And that book has been a part of my life ever since. You know, I had the... For the longest time, I had the discipline where I would read through the Bible in a year. Any of y'all ever do that? You know, just read through the Bible over the course of a year? And eventually, I began to slow that pace to where I would just read, like John Wesley did. I would read a chapter of the Bible each and every day. And that's what I do. I just finished 2 Corinthians, and now I've jumped back to Luke's Gospel. I'm reading through Luke's Gospel. But I do that on a daily basis and allow the Word of God to wash over me. But I get it. I get it. It is not a question of authority for me. It's not a question of authority for me. It's a question of interpretation. And I think that's what we're wrestling with right now, is how we interpret the Bible and how we interpret specific passages. Now, I am gonna tell you a story, and I have a captured audience, okay? So, I am gonna tell you a story because it does relate to the authority and interpretation of Scripture. And I wanna go there tonight because I know that is what's pressing upon many, many people. So, when Richard and I went through the ordination process... Richard, I believe it was the 1988 discipline. Is that the discipline you were ordained under? That's the one I was ordained in. Yeah, it's something like that. Ninety-two? Yeah, because... Yeah, yeah. Because that's when I was ordained as... Somewhere around there. I was ordained as an elder. But when Richard and I were ordained, we were ordained as deacons first. And we did that during the second year of seminary. So, on top of all of our seminary work, we also had to do all of the work for the Conference Board of Ordained Ministry, answering all the traditional questions and everything. And we then would go before the Conference Board of Ordained Ministry, and they would ordain us as deacons, what is now provisional elder. And then, what was it, two or three years out of seminary, we would then be ordained as elders. But I remember the process of being ordained as a deacon. Had done all the paperwork, had done all the small group work, had jumped through all the hoops, I'll just say it, jumped through all the hoops. And then, we went to Simpson Wood, and we had to meet with the Conference Board of Ordained Ministry. We'd meet in our small group, and then we'd go on into the larger group. And Richard can tell you, intimidating, because we went in this large room, and the wall was lined with chairs, and there was a single chair in the middle, and they start firing questions at you. It was intimidating and overwhelming. Right before I walked in, about 10 or 15 minutes before I walked in, to be interviewed by the Board of Ordained Ministry, a conference leader, which I will never name, a conference leader, someone I deeply respected, came to me and said to me, "Doug, you need to prepare yourself to be denied today. And as any United Methodist minister can tell you, if you're deferred, you get an opportunity to come back. If you're denied, that's it. You're done. You'll never be a United Methodist minister. There's no appealing it, there's no arguing it. You're just flat-out denied. Thank you very much, go home." Now, second year of seminary, first year of being married. All of my eggs are in one basket. I'm going to be a United Methodist minister. And when I looked at this person that I deeply respected, I asked the question, "Why would you say that I'm going to be denied?" And he looked at me, and he said, "Doug, I'm gonna speak a truth that no one else will speak to you. You need to prepare yourself to be denied because no church wants a blind preacher." Now, Richard knows this, Steve knows this, my wife, of course, knows this. I'm legally blind. I was born with congenital macular degeneration, with Conrad's cell deficiency. My vision is limited to 2,400. So, now you know why my wife is with me tonight. I can't drive. I know how to drive. The state of Georgia will not give me a driver's license, much to your benefit. So, if you don't know, you know, we hear 2020, 2030, 2040. What 2,400 means is what you can see at 400 feet, I have to be 20 feet away. So, you folks on the front row, y'all are beautiful. The rest of you are a blur to me. And this person that I deeply respected shared with me that no church would ever want me because of my visual impairment. But he didn't stop there. He quoted Scripture to me. And he said to me, "Go and look up..." I'll never forget it. Leviticus 21:18. "Go and look it up, Doug." And so, I did. This is the Word of God for us. The Lord said to Moses, say to Aaron, "None of your future descendants, who have some kind of imperfection, are allowed to offer their God's food." He's talking about the priestly order, of who can serve as a priest and who cannot. "No one who has an imperfection will be allowed to make an offering. This includes anyone who is blind, crippled, disfigured, deformed, anyone who has a broken foot or hand, anyone who is a hunchback or too small, anyone who has an eye disease." Now, you notice when I came in, I got two strikes against me. I'm legally blind, and I'm too small. I share that with you folks because when it comes to who can serve as God's minister, if we turn to God's Holy Word, I don't know any of us that would be qualified to do so. Now, I'm not here tonight to promote the ordination of self-professed practicing gays or lesbians. I know that you struggle with that, or some of you do. I struggled with it myself. Because I know God's Holy Word. I know the importance of God's Holy Word. But I also know from my own experience that if we are obedient to the Scriptures, then I should have never been ordained. Robin should have never been ordained. No minister that has ever been divorced should have ever been ordained. And yet, we come down on this issue of human sexuality, and we ask the question of who qualifies to be an ordained minister? And so, people wanna ask me, you know, "What do you believe? Do you believe that self-professed practicing gays and lesbians should be ordained?" And that causes me great tension. But then I remember exactly what the Scriptures say about me, and I think to myself of what the Scriptures say about the authority of women in the life of a church. And I think to myself of what the Scriptures say that a minister should be the husband of one woman and one woman only. I've got several peers, United Methodist clergy, who had to leave the Baptist church in order to be... and come to the United Methodist church and transfer their credentials, transfer their ordination because they went through a divorce and they could no longer be a Baptist preacher. And the pain that that caused them. And so, it's not a question of the authority of Scripture, it's a question of the interpretation of Scripture. And how you interpret the Scripture, how Steve interprets the Scripture, how Richard interprets the Scripture, how I interpret the Scripture, hopefully and prayerfully, is in one accord. But how the Holy Spirit witnesses to each and every one of us is very different. Very different. There's a beautiful painting by Caravaggio that shows the Gospel writer Matthew writing the Scriptures. And in the background, you see what you perceive to be a small child, but it's not. It's an angel. And the angel is whispering into Matthew's ear as he writes. And I believe that the Scriptures are the inspired Word of God. And I don't know a United Methodist minister that doesn't believe that. But how that angel whispers, how the Holy Spirit whispers into our ear can be very different. And perhaps that's what's brought us to this time. I'm not here to persuade you tonight. I'm not here to argue with you. I'm not here to debate with you. I'm simply to witness. To witness of how God has worked in my life and how God continues to work in my life as a United Methodist minister. Is the General Conference the only body of the United Methodist Church that has the power to extend paragraph 2553, pass 1231... 12... Thank you. 123123, "Or provide other avenues for churches to disaffiliate." Can the conference, considering extending the disaffiliation option for churches beyond... Hang on. Beyond the current deadline of 123123 so that churches can see what happens at General Conference in the spring of 2024? Gosh, that's a big question. Yes, the General Conference is the only one and the only body that can extend paragraph 2553 moving forward. It is the only body that can do that because it's the only body that can make decisions about what goes into the Book of Discipline. No annual conference can do that, no district can do that. So, I think we all understand that. But the bishop and the cabinet issued a statement, what was it? Two months ago, maybe three months ago, that any church beyond 123123, any church that wants to seek disaffiliation after General Conference 2024, though we do not have the power to extend paragraph 2553, the spirit of paragraph 2553 will certainly be taken into consideration moving forward. So, I shared with you earlier that I am not a delegate to jurisdictional conference, and I'm not a delegate to general conference. Dan Parr, is Dan here tonight? Dan, good to see you. Well, I really don't see you, but I saw your hand wave. But it's good to be with you tonight. Dan, you are a delegate to General Conference, is that correct? Jurisdictional, okay. I saw you at jurisdictional conference. And did see you up close and personal, but you were busy paying attention, and I was just wandering the room because I'm not a delegate, and I didn't have to pay attention. But my understanding, and this is the chatter I'm hearing, and maybe you're hearing this as well, too. So, General Conference 2024, it has been established, I put it into my calendar today. So, we know that General Conference 2024 is going to happen. You wanna say amen to that? Amen. I am ready for General Conference 2024 to take place. So, what I am hearing, and this is not my peers saying this, my colleagues saying this, I'm hearing this above my pay grade. So, I have heard this from several different bishops, from across the connection. And what I am hearing is this, is that at General Conference 2024, we know, you know, there's no reason not to address it, but we know that the issue of human sexuality is going to be debated. And it is going to be debated, and it's going to be debated. So, the general consensus seems to be that if the language changes, and that is a big if... and that is a big if, if the language changes, that there will be resolutions put forth that will continue the spirit of paragraph twenty-five fifty-three. That churches, if the language changes, will be given the opportunity then to be able to disaffiliate. So that's what I'm hearing. Unfortunately, none of us can say with one hundred percent certainty of what's going to take place at General Conference in twenty-two-four. The image that I use is that many of us are wishing, wishing that we had a crystal ball, that we can look into that crystal ball and say, this is exactly what's going to happen. And I tell people, we're not holding a crystal ball. What we're holding in reality is the Magic Eight Ball. Do you remember those from our kid, when we were kids? Come on, guys, do y'all remember that from when we were kids? You know, you ask it a question, you shake it up, and what did it usually say to you? Ask me later. That's kind of what we're holding right now because no one can say with certainty what's going to happen at General Conference twenty-two-four. But what I'm hearing, and I don't know if you're hearing this is, you know, along the way, but what I'm hearing is the chances are anything changing in the discipline in twenty-two-four are very unlikely. Very unlikely. That it will probably not be until twenty-eight or thirty-two, possibly even thirty-six. But again, I say that from the perspective of nobody knows exactly what's going to happen. And so if the language does not change in twenty-two-four, and I hear this back and forth in these informational meetings, if the language does not change in twenty-two-four, what does that mean moving forward? Will this debate go away? What do y'all think? No, probably not. It's been debated since it went into the book of discipline in nineteen seventy-two. I mean, this issue's been debated for the past fifty years. When Richard and I were in seminary together, my gosh. I mean, it was debated almost on a daily basis when I was in seminary. So this debate has been around for a long time. But even with that debate, the possibilities of the language changing in twenty-two-four are very unlikely. And the Judicial Council, what's today? Today's Thursday? The Judicial Council, was it Tuesday or Wednesday? Finally came out with their decision that the delegates elected to go to the twenty-nineteen General Conference will be the same delegation that goes to the twenty-two-four delegation. So the delegations are not going to change moving forward into twenty-two-four. So the same delegation or the same General Conference that voted in the traditionalist plan will be the same delegation that is present at General Conference in twenty-two-four. What will they do? Again, nobody can say with certainty. But on a personal note, I can connect the dots. And the dots tell me that there will probably not be a change in twenty-two-four. And so what does that mean for us moving forward? Well, I can share this with you. And this is a part of the questions and seem to be kind of at the heart of the questions. So we have a book of discipline. Why are people not following it? Amen. And I agree with you one hundred percent. Why are people not following the book of discipline? And why is the discipline not being upheld? And that is certainly an issue that the United Methodist church has to address. And I pray that they do address it. Because we have to have consistency for our connection across the United Methodist church. And we can't have one conference doing one thing and another conference doing another thing. But here is what I can tell you. And if you can, and if you can show me where we're doing it, I want to have a conversation with you. But in the Northeast District of the United Methodist Church and the North Georgia Conference, we are upholding the book of discipline. In the North Georgia Conference, we are upholding the book of discipline as it relates to human sexuality. That in the North Georgia Conference, no minister who is a self-professed practicing gay or lesbian is being ordained. And in the North Georgia Conference, none of our clergy are performing same-sex marriages. Now, there's been some debate over that. And some of our clergy have been brought up on charges because they participated in a wedding. But they did not do the vows, they did not sign the license, and they did not pronounce the couple. They were there as friends and probably offered a prayer or read a passage of scripture. But they were there with friends. And in one of the situations, it was actually the daughter of one of our members, or one of our clergy. Would you not attend your daughter's wedding? Your son's wedding? You may not agree with it, but still your son and still your daughter. And so for me, and I can only speak for our district and I can only speak for our conference, that we are upholding the book of discipline as it relates to human sexuality. But I know that there are conferences that are not doing that. And I know that, you know that and I know that. You know, out West, two self-professed practicing, one's a lesbian and one's a gay man, that are openly gay and married. And both of them have been consecrated and both of them are bishops. And you asked the question, how can that happen? Well, I join you in that. With our current book of discipline, how can that happen? And my, my response to that, I really don't have an answer for that. Because I don't know how that can happen. Should it have happened? Not according to our book of discipline. And so I think that it is something that has to be addressed by the United Methodist church. And I hope moving forward that that is something that we will address. But I don't know of any denomination, if they have a legally binding guidance. You know, so many of our independent churches really don't have those types of things. But most denominations kind of have, you know, a rulebook. But I'm not sure that all those denominations are following the rules. We aspire to do so and we commit ourselves to doing so. But, you know, take human sexuality off the table, has the United Methodist church always followed the book of discipline to the letter, to the letter? I think it's something we struggle with. You know, individual churches struggle with it. I've had several of my churches in this district who have violated the book of discipline. Now, it may not seem like that big of a deal, but they did. And I've had conversations with the pastors around it when I find out. Because, you know, a handful of our churches have invited clergy from the Global Methodist Church to come and speak in their church. And that is a violation of the book of discipline. Because any minister of another denomination to come and speak in one of our churches, that clergy has to reach out to me and ask for my permission. And I did not, I was not informed of it. That's a violation of the book of discipline. And so the book of discipline is there, yes, to guide us, to direct us. But do we always follow it? I think we aspire to do so. I think we're committed to do so. And I think that we should do so. So as the district superintendent of the Northeast District, I can assure you, and I can assure you across the North Georgia Annual Conference, that as the discipline is related to human sexuality, we are following the book of discipline. And we will continue to do so. Our new bishop, Bishop Deese, came out with a statement before she was elected bishop, that she does not believe that homosexuality is a sin. And that she believes in full inclusion. But I have heard her say unquestionably in a cabinet meeting that she will follow the book of discipline and she will uphold the book of discipline as it relates not only to human sexuality, but as it relates to all things. And so we are still functioning as a church under paragraph, not paragraph, but under the two thousand and nineteen book of discipline. That's what we continue to do. And yes, we do need to get a handle on conferences and jurisdictions that are not following the book of discipline. And we need to find a means and a way of being able to address that. Will there be a place for folks who want to remain United Methodist if this church decides to disaffiliate? The answer to that is yes. We will. Through congregational excellence and through the Office of Ministerial Excellence as well too, conversations are being had now of where we will plant new United Methodist churches and where we will fund the planting of new churches and where we will use our resources to be able to address areas in which we might lose a county seat church or where we might lose several churches within the county. We have a plan in place and we are working that plan and we are working through that process to be able to address where we might have what are called Methodist deserts. Where we lose churches that make the decision to disaffiliate, we will have areas where we will plant new churches. And so, yes, if this church makes the decision to disaffiliate, for those of you who want to remain United Methodist, there will be an expression of the United Methodist church in this community. And so I can share that with you. I don't think that's a secret and I just think that is, just makes sense. Is there a reason to believe that the conference will act in a punitive or vindictive way towards this church for considering disaffiliation? What do you think? I think one of the things that I can say about our current bishop, about our future bishop and about the cabinet is that it is grace-filled. And just because a church calls for a church conference, which your church has done, there is, there's no sense of being punitive or vindictive in no shape, form, or fashion. We're just not going to do that. We're not going to punish our churches and we're not going to punish our pastors. But I will be honest with you. The cabinet did make a decision that if a church calls for a church conference, that their pastors will be put on the move list. And we do that not to punish the church, but we do that to protect our pastors. Because unless our pastor tells us that they want to disaffiliate, unless our pastors tell us that if their church disaffiliates and it votes to disaffiliate, that they would like to stay with their church, unless our pastor tells us that that's what they want to do. If a church calls for a church conference, because church conferences would not take place until sometime in March, between March, April, and May, that's when appointments are being made. Richard can tell you the schedule on appointment making. And so until a church, until a pastor tells us, you know, I want to stay with my church if it disaffiliates, then we have to put them on the move list. Because appointments are being made and we're doing that to protect our pastor. We're not doing that to punish the pastor. Because as Steve has told me time and time again, this is a movement within the church. And Steve has done a very good job of providing you with the information that you need. He's been in prayer with you about that process. So, you know, Steve has done his part with you in providing you the information that you need. And so, yeah, I mean, we're not looking to get anybody. And just to be real honest with you, I mean, that wouldn't be very Christian, would it? And we certainly want to be grace-filled and we certainly want to be Christ-like in this process. So, no, this church will not be punished for wanting to move to a church conference. What is the risk that Delonica United Methodist Church will not be allowed to lead in the future if paragraph twenty-five fifty-three expires? At Annual Conference twenty-two-three, if any church in your district is voted upon, I have big print, that's why I have so many pages. Individual church, instead, as a group of churches, will you commit now to speaking from the floor in support of the local church stating that they follow the conference requirements? Here's what I'll tell you as a district superintendent. As a district superintendent, I'm an advocate for my pastors and I'm an advocate for the church. That's my role, that's my responsibility. Okay? So, you know, it's not a situation, again, that we're looking to be punitive in any shape, form, or fashion. But I am your district superintendent. For better, for worse, I'm your district superintendent. You've got me and I've got you. And so I will be an advocate for Steve and I will be an advocate for this church. That's the commitment I make to you. And that's really the only commitment that I can make to you. I can't make a commitment to you to state uncategorically that at Annual Conference I will stand up and speak at the microphone on behalf of Delonica United Methodist Church. The trustees have not even told us yet of how the votes would be taken at Annual Conference this year. And yes, I'm aware of what happened in Arkansas. Was not aware of what took place in Arkansas until the question came, what about what happened at Arkansas? And I had to go look and see what happened at Arkansas. I cannot speak on behalf of what happened at that called Annual Conference. And I'm not sure why there were certain churches that, why they voted individually and why they did not allow that handful of churches to disaffiliate. But here's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking that the reason they did not allow those churches to disaffiliate is because those churches probably did something in the disaffiliation process to where, you know, they, they were considered not to be in good standing. So something happened, something was done. I don't think the churches were being punished because of it, but something had to happen along the way. I'm not a part of the Arkansas Annual Conference, I'm not on that cabinet, so I don't know exactly what happened. I did not attend that Annual Conference, so I don't know what happened there. But I do know that that happened. How will the vote be taken, if the vote is taken at General, I mean, at Annual Conference? I have no idea. I would think that we would follow what we did last year, where seventy churches were voted on at once. But I don't know because I have not heard that. If I'd heard that, I would share that with you. So not sure how that's going to proceed. Please give a full definition of the term good standing. Richard, you want to take a shot at that one? So what, what, so, gosh, what does it mean to be in good standing? So any church in good standing. The Conference Board of Trustees outlined the process for disaffiliation. And so if a church is moving towards disaffiliation, if the churches want to have a called church conference, then it falls upon the responsibility of the district superintendent to deem a church in good standing. And from what I can tell, from what I can tell in conversations with Steve and emails with the discernment committee, what I have seen, I would consider Delonica United Methodist Church in good standing. Don't see you violating any of the agreement. Steve's a lawyer, he can probably speak to this better than I can. There's a certain understanding between two parties that one party, if you're, if you're in negotiations with one another, that one party will act accordingly in a certain way and the other party act. that one party will act according in a certain way, and the other party act in a certain way. And so, as long as both are acting in good intention and faith, then you have an agreement. And I just don't see Delanega United Methodist Church, I haven't seen that you have done anything that would disqualify you, or, you know, have you deemed not in good standing? Is there something you want to share with me? Okay. Okay. I kind of cut that question off, and I apologize for that. Let's see, just making sure. I love this. "Please be specific rather than general." I'm a new district superintendent, all right? Yes, I answered that question. "How and when will a church be notified?" Okay, I've answered that. All right. "Please describe in detail the process that will be used in conducting a church conference vote for disaffiliation." So, again, there's a process to that, and that process is not complicated. It really is not complicated. So, when the bishop invited me to serve on the cabinet, I really started serving as district superintendent and serving a church in mid-March of last year. I was included in cabinet meetings and conversations. I got to see how the appointment process is done. And if you ever wonder what the appointment process is like, I don't know how Richard would describe it, but the way that I would describe it, do any of y'all ever watch the NFL Draft? And how that takes place, that's kind of what appointments are like, you know? Somebody makes an appointment, and then there's a trade. Or somebody says, "I'll give you this person if you give me that person." I mean, it's back and forth, back and forth. It's kind of a wild ride. But as being a part of the appointed cabinet at that time without a vote, I wanted to immerse myself and catch up as quickly as I could. I was in the Central South District where Byron Thompson is the district superintendent and a very dear friend. And Byron allowed me to attend church conferences where churches were voting for disaffiliation. So, it's a very simple process. Notification of the church conference has to go out to the entire membership, the membership of this church. Everyone that you have on the roll has to be contacted, or an attempt has to be contacted. An attempt has to be made to contact them. As all of us know as ministers, as all of us know as church members, we have church members that we have no idea where they are, and it's just impossible to contact. But the effort has to be shown that the congregation has been notified, not only from the pulpit, but they have to be notified by email. They have to be notified however you communicate here in this church. You have to communicate with your congregation that on this day, at this time, there is a called church conference for the sole purpose of voting either to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church or remain affiliated to the United Methodist Church, and that's it. So, I would come and either a representative, another elder with me, or our AA would accompany me to the church conference. And as people are coming in, she would have the role, and as people are coming in, she's checking people off as they come in. I know that some church, or some districts required people to come in and show their ID. But in this district last year, Alice did not do that. So, I'm just going to continue the practice that Alice did. So, as people are coming in, a representative from our district will be with me. They will check off names as they're coming in. A ballot will be given to you. And really, the ballot will have paragraph 2553. This is what we're voting on. Yes, no, basically. And then, that will be a secret ballot. Those ballots will be taken up. And after those ballots are taken up, we will adjourn with tellers, and we will count the votes. We will then come back into the space wherever we are, maybe here in the sanctuary, and then we would share the results of that vote. The requirement is two-thirds to disaffiliate, one-third, which would then leave one-third. So, it's two-thirds plus one, but one-third plus one, you don't disaffiliate. And I've had several churches ask, you know, "Why is that bar set so high?" And the reason why that bar is set so high is the belief that if two-thirds plus one vote to disaffiliate and one-third voted not to disaffiliate, there's a possibility you can lose one-third of your congregation. And there's not too many churches that can survive with a third of their congregation walking away. So, the reason why it's not set at a majority vote of 50% plus one is there's not any church that I know of that can survive with 49% of their congregation walking away. So, that's why that bar, that's how it was explained to me. So, that's why that bar is set so high. My advice and my encouragement that any church that is not confident that they have around 90% of the congregation wanting to disaffiliate, you might want to reconsider. Because if you have 80%, that's 20% of your congregation that did not want to disaffiliate. Will they remain with you? That would be their decision. But when you start losing, you know, 20% of your congregation or 30% of your congregation, not a whole lot of churches can survive that. Good gosh. Time flies when you're having fun, right? 717. I'm going to come down here because we're going to wind this up. I still have other questions, and I will address those questions and get those to Steve. One of the questions that are in this, and I want to address this very quickly, is, "In this disaffiliation process, if you could change anything, would you change it?" And the answer to that is absolutely. And one of the things that I would change in this disaffiliation process is the amount of misinformation that has been shared with congregations. It's heartbreaking. And you've probably on the street, among friends, somewhere on the internet, you've seen the misinformation. And you cannot imagine the misinformation that I've heard in these informational meetings. I was at an informational meeting at one of our small churches. And I, like you, I had them submit the questions to me before I came. One of the questions that was asked was, "How many of our ministers in the Northeast District are openly gay? Are you our district superintendent gay? And is our bishop gay?" That's one of the questions that I was asked. I didn't, before I address that question, I asked the question of the people sitting in the room. "How many of you have heard that our bishop is gay?" Half the people in that room raised their hand. Now, I paused because I didn't want to ask the question, "How many of you think that I'm gay?" But I asked it, and a couple of people raised their hands and said, "That's what we've heard." And then I asked, "How many have you heard that we have gay ministers here in the Northeast District?", and everybody raised their hands. Well, I can assure you, our bishop is not gay. That's my wife sitting right back there, and she will show you pictures of all three of our beautiful children that I'm the father of. And to my knowledge, I don't have any gay or lesbian ministers in our district. But that is what this church has been told. There's other things that churches are being told, that the United Methodist Church, moving forward, will no longer believe in the virgin birth, that we will no longer believe in the physical resurrection of Jesus, that we will no longer believe in the divinity of Christ, that we will no longer believe that Jesus is the sole means to our salvation, that we will no longer believe that the atonement of Christ, the sacrifice of Christ, the crucifixion of Christ is not the only way that we can be saved, that we can save ourselves. Some of the misinformation out there, that Jesus is no longer, will no longer be the way, the truth, and the life, and that the United Methodist Church will no longer believe in the authority of Scripture. I had an informational meeting. I had the question, "Why is the College of Bishops working on a new translation of the Bible?" That's the kind of misinformation that we're being bombarded with. And I can emphatically say to you, I don't know a single United Methodist minister, a single United Methodist minister. Remember, I've been at this for a while. I don't know a single United Methodist minister that does not believe in the resurrection of Jesus, the physical resurrection of Jesus. I don't know a single United Methodist minister that does not believe in the virgin birth. I don't know of a single United Methodist minister that does not believe in the divinity of Christ, that believes that Jesus is the sole means of our salvation, that Jesus is the way, the truth, and the life. And I don't know a single United Methodist minister that does not believe that the Scriptures are the Holy Spirit-inspired Word of God. I don't know any minister like that. Now, I hear the chatter, and I hear, "Well, what about this bishop who said this?", or "this minister who said that?", or "this seminary professor who said this?" Well, they don't speak on my behalf. They don't speak for me. And they don't speak for Richard. They don't speak for Steve. They don't speak for Robin. They don't. And just because we have outliers out there, and we can pinpoint where they are and what they're doing, that some young minister up in some conference dresses up in drag and does children's messages, that's not the average United Methodist minister. And that's not the United Methodist ministers who have filled this pulpit and filled the pulpits here in the Northeast Georgia, in the Northeast Georgia District. So, the misinformation, if I could change anything, I would change that. And I would change this belief that somehow, with a very broad brush, the United Methodist Church is no longer following the Book of Discipline. But again, I can't speak on behalf of other conferences, and I cannot speak on behalf of other jurisdictions. Yes, that needs to be cleaned up, and I pray that it is cleaned up after General Conference 2024. Okay. Are you hungry? I am, and my wife, Lynn waving at everybody? There you are. I'm waving at this person back here. I told you I can't see. Hey, back there in the corner. Who's back in the very back corner? I'm not flirting with you, I promise. That's the only person I flirt with. So, let's thank Lynn for bringing me out tonight. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Steve. Richard, before you leave tonight, will you come and give me a big hug, buddy? Because I'd love to see you. We go way back and ran in circles of friends, and it's just good to be with y'all. And it's good to be with all of y'all. I pray a very special Christmas upon you. And I pray that the one who came to us in human form will come to you once again in a new and powerful way this year, that you will experience the presence of Christ in your home, that you will experience the presence of Christ among your friends, that you will experience the presence of Christ as you gather here for that sacred celebration, that sacred celebration when Christ became one of us, so that we could become one with Him. That's my prayer. Can I offer a blessing for us? O Lord, gracious God, I thank you for this church. I am thankful for the leadership of this church. I ask your forgiveness tonight, because, God, they deserve so much more than what I can bring to them. But I pray that you work in their hearts, that you work among them, that as they make this difficult decision, which it will be, I pray that you give them peace of mind, and that you continue to work through them as they embrace this community, as they love this community, and as they love their neighbor, as they love themselves. I am thankful for the saints who are here tonight. I am thankful for the saints who have come before them, and I am thankful for the saints that will come after them. And I ask your blessing upon them. In your Son's holy name, we pray, and together we say, amen. Thank you, my friends.